Good evening and thank you for joining us in our annual reorganization meeting tonight. Our current meeting took order at five o'clock. In the event of an evacuation and we need to evacuate the building, we can go out the door behind the Hendricksons or we can go off to the right here for the superintendent's office and we can head out far away from the building as possible. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Action 1.04 to appoint the district clerk. Would somebody move that, please?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 5-0-0. Action 1.05, appointment of the temporary chairperson. Somebody move it?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 5-0-0.
There's only five of us here, then?
Yep, there's only five of us here right now. Action 1.06 is a roll call of board members. Mrs. Abigor is present. Mr. DeJalorme? Present?
I'm just wondering, what are you only got five of us? There's six of us here.
There's six.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's six of us because Mrs. Abigor is on vacation. Thank you. Thank you for that. Mrs. O'Brien is officially one of us. Welcome. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, so Mrs. Abigor is present for the roll call for one, action 1.06. Mr. DeJalorme?
Present.
Okay. Mrs. Hutchinson? Mrs. Mainville?
Present.
Miss Prowl?
Present.
Mr. Connors?
Present.
And Mrs. O'Brien?
Present.
I'm sorry about that, guys. Action 1.07, we'll be doing our administration of oath and code of ethics. So, we should all have that in front of us. We're gonna pull that out as I read it. You guys may sign and date today. I do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of the Fulton City School District Board of Education member according to the best of my ability. So, once we sign those, Mrs. Trude will collect those.
You wanna help me with that?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, my God. Stop. This is my day. I'm still in June.
Please don't take us back to June.
No, no. I like the weather too much in July. Let's see. There's the three on the left. You've got three on the left.
Okay, and then you also got your board operational goals. Mrs. Trude printed off for us so that we have that as one of our policies. So, you guys will have that at your hands. All right. Action 1.08 will be the election of the 2025-2026 officers. Going to, A, set the outcome of our election, so we're gonna be voting for our president and our vice president. So, we're gonna open up the floor, nominations for presidents. Anybody?
For president?
For presidents.
Brenda, I'm nominating you.
Thank you, Tim.
I nominate Fallon Hutchinson.
Okay, so Brenda and Fallon. So, can I get those who are interested in votes for Fallon? And those who are interested in votes for myself? Thank you. Opening up the floor for our vice president candidate, I nominate Mr. Connors. So, anybody else? So, all of those who are in favor for Mr. Connors for vice president?
Do I put my hand up for him?
If you wanna vote for yourself. All right.
You're not on the second floor.
So, that'll be six for Mr. Connors. All right. The final resolution, can somebody move that?
Move it.
Second.
Good job. There we go. All right.
We've been next to each other for too long.
Therefore, this Board of Education had held election for officers. The results of the elections are for Brenda as president and Tim as vice president. Can I get all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Seven, six. My goodness, now you all have me going crazy here today. All right. Action 1.09, voting delegates for our alternate for NISBA. Is anybody interested in doing the delegates? Mr. DeJalorme, are you interested in that again?
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay. Can I get somebody to move that?
Move it.
Anybody, does that get it?
Second.
Okay. And then we need an alternate voting delegate, just in case Mr. DeJalorme is not available that evening. Anybody interested in doing that?
I would.
Just?
Yeah.
Perfect. And that is online, correct? Usually the Monday before or the week before?
It's, it's been virtual.
So.
So.
That'll be great. All right.
If you wanna, if you wanna get together and see how it's done.
Yeah, that sounds great.
We've been there as late as midnight.
It's nice that it's been up.
Surprise.
We think Mr. DeJalorme, he has, he has done this for the last couple of years and he is, he has made it. He said other members across the state have dropped out.
Dropped out. Matter of fact, that's why we only went to midnight because we didn't have enough delegates to have a quorum.
So, they had to stop, so.
So, stopped at midnight.
All right. All those in favor of Nick and Jessica?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.10, appoint the deputy district clerk. Somebody move it?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.11, appointment of officers. Somebody move that?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.12, we have all of our other appointments for the district. Somebody be interested in moving that?
Move it.
Second.
Jessica and Jen. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.13, appoint committee on special education?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.14, appoint the committee of preschool education?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.15, our dignity for all students coordinators?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.16, our school law firm?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.17, bonding of personnel?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.18, official bank depository for all of our funds?
Move it.
Second.
Was that Tim?
Yes.
And Jen? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.19 is our official newspapers?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.20, person to certify payroll?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.21, purchasing agent and agent for temporary investment of funds?
Tim.
Tim and Nick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.22 is our attendance at conferences, conventions, workshops, et cetera?
Move it.
Second.
Tim. Boy, he's first. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.23, authorization to establish petty cash funds?
Move it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.24 is the startup fund?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.25, designation of authorized signatures on checks?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.26, authorization to approve budget transfers?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.27, authorization to access safety deposit boxes?
Move it.
Second.
Was it Tim?
Nick.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.28 is to authorize the bank as school tax collector?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.29 is a roll call for the authorization of the issuance of revenue anticipation and/or tax anticipation notes. I am a yes, Mr. DeJalorme?
Yes.
Miss Mainville?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Miss Prowl?
Yes.
And Miss O'Brien?
Yes.
All right. Action 1.30, establish the rate of mileage reimbursement?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.31, the building use fees?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.32, our gate receipts and admission fees?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.33 is our non-resident tuition rates?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 1.34 is the rates of miscellaneous service?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 2.01 will be building principles to suspend students under education law sections 3213, 3214, and 3216?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 2.02 is to authorize the superintendent to require employees to undergo medical exam under education law 913?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 2.03, our regular Board of Education meetings? Let me see. They are to still start at six o'clock. I think that there was a little bit of discussion to have, so if somebody could move that first?
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Okay. So, the discussion that we needed to have, and I believe there's a calendar, that should be right in front of you. One of the dates is in November. So, the discussion is, do we want to do our meeting on the fourth or the 12th? We would only have one meeting that month earlier rather than later. I know that Thanksgiving pops up, so that kind of gives us the...
Should we do it in the 12th then, so that it's more in the middle?
There would be two meetings. It's just how it...
There is two meetings. It says four or 12. Oh, the 25th is after.
And then there will be the 25th as well.
Thanksgiving right there, that's why. Okay, so, then the 25th being that's our second meeting, do you wanna do it, the 12th being closer to the 25th or the 4th?
Probably, my vote's the 12th because our second meeting's the 28th of October.
Yeah, 'cause then it's...
So, that seems like pretty close.
Then they would be really close. Yeah.
Tim and Nick, what do we think?
I'm good with whatever you got.
All right.
So, let's go ahead and do the 12th. I forgot my calendar.
So, you're welcome.
All right. And then, looking at May, just keep in mind that we do have a tentative date for the 21st. We will have a meeting on the 14th and we do need to do a meeting on the 28th, which would be to approve that Boce's budget.
Did you say April?
May 20th?
She meant April.
No, April.
April.
April 14th, we'll have a meeting. The 28th is the approval of the Boce's.
Oh, I see, now, okay.
And then, a tentative is the 21st because it's possible that we may need to do some budget talking, approval for our own district on that date. So, that date is a tentative, so it's possible we'll have three meetings that month. And then, also in May, as we get closer, I know sometimes we move those dates depending around the ratify of the election, but keep in mind that there's a possible three-day meetings there for May as well. Okay? Any other discussion on that? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 2.04, authorize the superintendent to hire staff on a per DM basis?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 2.05 is approved professional development plan?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 2.06 is to approve our code of conduct?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. And then, 2.07 is to reaffirm all of our policies. Does that include the ones that we're talking about tonight?
I think that's our first reading tonight for the other meeting.
No, the other one is approval, these are...
It is approval. This would just be...
We're approving all policies and like it was on our first...
So, it would reaffirm all that we have of as of right now?
Yes.
And then, yes.
Before we vote on them?
And, well, because...
Well, what we would have now and then we're going to change.
We're going to...
Put them back in place.
We'll put them back into play.
So, what we have right now before this meeting starts?
So, we know that we're reaffirming that all the policies we have in place are in place and then when we jump into the regular meeting, then we can talk about those three. You can have...
I guess it's the ones we've already approved.
Yeah, okay. For, for the course of this past year. Good?
Yep.
Yeah. All right. All those in, oh, can somebody move that, please? Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. And then, would somebody like to call this portion of the meeting adjournment?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Mr. Lawrence, welcome.
Thank you.
That was our reorg. Congratulations, Mr. Connors. And...
We need to say hello.
Nope. We just move right on. We just go right from here.
No.
That's how you had it in the paper for our council, where we're gonna go from one meeting right to the next. Yep. All right. Okay. We're gonna start our regular board meeting for July 8th. It is 5:18. Thank you. Action 1.02, to approve the agenda. Somebody like to move that?
Move it.
Move it. So, I have Lori and then who wants to second?
Second.
Tim Beach, both do it.
Good job.
For our community members at home, if anyone is wishing to reach out to the Board of Education, you can reach us at clerk@fulton.cny ric.org. Right. Did we, we moved it, then I need everyone to, yes?
Aye.
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 Abstain? And nay? Passes 6-0-0. We're going to reaffirm the evacuation plan behind the Hendricksons or over to the right of myself if we need to move away from the building. Do you all like to join me for the pledge of allegiance again? Why not?
It was just Independence.
It was just Independence Day, that is correct.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. There is nobody signed up for public forum this evening. I have somebody move, action 1.06, to approve the June 24th regular meeting minutes?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. All right, we have just a few things going on for July. At our next meeting, we will do our retreat here in the boardroom at four o'clock and then that will follow by our regular board meeting at six. Our Board of Education handbook is another thing that has come up for topic. I know that we were going to start to work on that last year a little bit. Things got real busy for us with our superintendent's search and some of our other things that we were involved in, so if anyone is interested, and we can even do this in smaller groups, it doesn't have to be the same three people that do it, that bring it back all the time, we can open this up for discussion on how you guys want to start to formulate our handbook. And I know Mr. DeJalorme also wants to get something into place for our students as well, so when our students come on, they know exactly what, you know, they would be entailed in them to do.
Yeah. I could use help in that, so.
Okay.
If anybody's interested in doing the student handbook.
Okay, so we have a student section and then we have our regular section. So, who are we?
I'll help out.
You wanna help out?
Sure.
Okay.
So, there is no handbook right now at all? It's, we're starting from scratch?
Well, I mean, we have some things into place, some policies and things. Last year, we did a retreat where we had gotten some samples from other school districts, but yes, we're gonna Fultonize it. We don't have anything permanent.
We don't have a handbook.
We do not have anything permanent at this point, so it's just something to make a little, especially for our students and now that, um...
And I think from your perspective as a new board member, you know, having something And I think there are your perspective as a new board member, you know, having something when you come on that explains a little more about kind of just some of the rules that we're used to. I think it would be helpful. I, I know I, you know, would have definitely benefited from something like that, so we wanna make sure for future board members coming on, they have an easier time understanding some of the stuff that's either jargony or just some of the basic courtesies that we try to work with one another.
And another thing too, I, I was at the Oswego County School Boards Association last night, and we were talking about, um, some training that might be going on, um, that I can touch base with at the end, but it also would be something good for future members in the community who might be interested in running for board positions. That would be something that they would be able to look at so that they understand and know also what, uh, happens in board life, um, and know that that was something that, uh, the members were talking about at the school board meeting last night, so, um, I thought that was a really great point to bring up, so.
Sure, I'd be willing to help.
Okay.
Mr. Scott got a book called Onboarding.
Yes, yep.
That'd be a good help.
Yep. All right, so we'll, uh, talk about starting, setting up some committees over the next couple of meetings, and we'll get those underway.
So for those that offered to help, is that all for the regular board handbook, or is there anybody volunteering to help with the student board handbook?
You can kinda cross over too.
Yeah.
I would do.
Okay, there we go. Perfect. All right. Any, uh, thing else that anybody would like to add? Just like to welcome you all to our, our new year, and, uh, welcome, Ms. O'Brien again.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
We get to see you sitting here now, because you've been, you've been with us since February, basically.
I think I was a little bit more comfortable back there, but.
You went from being in the office and I said, I entered the audience, and I said, we should hire them. But behold, we made it here.
All right, well, without any further ado, I'm gonna pass this on over to our new superintendent, Mr. Doug Lawrence.
Thank you very much. Um, before, we, we only have one item on the superintendent's report, but before we get started with that, I just wanna thank everyone. Um, all the staff that I've met so far, we've had opportunities to go around to some buildings, we've had, we've kicked off our administrative, uh, retreat. Everyone's been very welcoming, uh, very kind in helping me, uh, get caught up to speed on quite a few things. I do wanna thank Mr. Pallino, he's been a great asset so far in, in giving me, uh, the background history on, on quite a few items, and again, the, the team's been great so far as well in, uh, helping me and, and really trying to keep me on the right track and keeping me up to speed, so I, I do appreciate that. So, um, the one item that we do have on the agenda for this evening, um, this is Mr. Hendrickson, are going to provide us with just a brief overview of the, or update on the district comprehensive improvement plan.
So this week, we received from New York State Ed Department, reviewed our district coherence plan, and they approved it. They said we met all our criteria. They did provide suggested feedback, they said we didn't have to make any adjustments, but we decided to go ahead and make the suggested changes under measuring success. And the last, um, action step there for quantitative data target, they suggested rather than average was general growth, and they suggested putting, exceed their annual growth target. So for each student to individualize that to exceed their annual growth rather than saying just a general growth. So, we made that adjustment, and it will be posted on our website.
Just a general number, it, it doesn't have to like increase by 5%. I can't just, just, yeah. Do better. Just do better. All right.
And they said to make it more individualized. We had, we had showed general growth.
Yeah.
For the subgroups, and they said they actually want individualized, and that each student actually may exceed or meet our annual growth for each of the targets.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Um, I just, a couple, I mean, I saw that we have our, um, who our team members are. Do we have students representing this, the district as well when we have these meetings?
We did the interview passes with all the students, but not on this one in particular. We had discussed that, but I think going forward when we, um, when we do our review visits, our benchmarking activities, that will be on the agenda.
Okay, and then, in the past, you've had board number or two on, you don't currently. Is it something that you would like to see? I mean, I would, I was thinking that maybe somebody might be interested in.
Sure.
Going for, okay, so keep that in mind when we, uh, you know, decide where we're gonna be at for our committees, which we didn't talk about in the last portion of our reorg, but, uh, this could be something too, if somebody in the board wants to, uh, jump in and help out with this as well.
We are, um, we will definitely have to write a plan for next year, it's usually a two-year plan, so, and I think we should start earlier than we did this year. So when that process starts, we can open it up and recruit more members.
Perfect, perfect. Are our parent members, um, are they, um, a split between grade, grade levels, like elementary, middle? I know we have two parents on.
It was really challenging to get parents, um, so we reached out during our Title I meeting and asked for feedback, and they said to try the nine o'clock time and the afternoon, so we're gonna try that again, and I think putting more items on the agenda to see if we can get more people there. Um, we talked about leveraging before musicals, before concerts, usually parents have to arrive an hour beforehand, so that might be an opportunity for us to reach out to parents to get more feedback, so that's something we're gonna try to work on to get variety.
Right. Are they both elementary parents?
Um, yes.
I know Jess is, right? But I, I don't know.
Jess at Chelsea Go-Kad Elementary.
Oh. That's good that we have parents on there.
Absolutely.
It's a good start.
And they, they connect to each one of those schools that are associated with us as well, so there's one rep from each of them.
One parent rep.
One parent rep. Those two parents that we are in the secure, one is from falling one of them.
Anything else?
I'll set down there.
All right, then let's move on to our finance section, 4.01, accept the financials. Somebody need that? Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 4.02 is to approve the disposal of surplus property.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, I was able to check with Cory quick, I heard what you asked, Lori. So I sent him a quick text. The difference between disposal and scrap, so disposal means it's been deemed just too wrecked to salvage and we're throwing it out. Scrap is recycling, so we're able to recycle.
Okay. Good question.
For the material maybe.
All right, so would they like to move that?
Move it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 5.01 is to approve our committee on special education.
Move it. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Our policies that are up for approval, gonna have somebody move those.
Cast the question.
Yep, let's move it, and then I'll, yeah, definitely. Move it. Okay, and then.
Second.
All right. Okay, so let's open it up for discussion.
Okay. Um, for the plan for the reentrance of students who have lives.
Okay.
Um, do we have a plan in place that's consistent amongst all of the school buildings for kids who do not have transportation and are not able, because you're not allowed to ride the bus?
Correct.
Right? So do we have a plan to get those kids to school beforehand? To get checked before reentering school? Do you know what I mean?
I know, I know exactly what you mean. Okay, so they can't ride on the school bus, mom, dad don't have car to bring them in, what is our plan to help them?
Historically, we've worked with transportation to make sure, like, they can't ride on a bus with other students, but we'll send a van if we need to pick up the liaisons, the homeschool liaisons, we'll coordinate with transportation, with the building principals, and make sure that we get them in to get the checks. That's what we've done at school.
Okay, and it's like all consistent throughout all of the buildings?
Yeah, we had Mr. Els actually come on for this meeting to describe the step-by-step process, and he went through, and we had one of the nurses come on, and they went through, you know, all the different things, they went through, like, they have a 15-minute rule, you know, as far as cleaning, and said, you know, what, you know, permissible, what's not, what's effective, what's not, and making sure if we have the product to be able to get the product in the hands of the people, so, you know, making sure that's not necessarily a barrier. So, Mr. Els did a really good job coming into the meeting and explaining all of this, because we wanted to know, like you said, what's the step-by-step, how's it being implemented? Is it the same everywhere? And that's all the different things, pieces we were able to get for the process part before we finalized the policy to come to here.
And once they're ready to come to school, we don't have to wait a couple days or anything, it's usually just like, they're ready, we're gonna go get them, we're gonna check them. Perfect, okay. That was my question, great question. Any other discussion, any other?
Um, I'm just wondering, do we have a school physician or a district physician? Who might that be?
Let's see. Um, we go through Oswego Health.
Okay, there's no, like, one particular doctor.
That's it.
It's a service that we do with Oswego Health. There was a physician, now we work with a nurse practitioner who consults with physicians there, so they're our service provider and our consultant.
Okay, thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Would somebody be interested in batching our personnel, which is 0.1 through 0.14? Move it.
Second.
I have a question. We go.
Sure, we'll open it up to discussion.
Should there be a section here for teachers on special assignments? Uh, no, not yet. We've talked in the executive session about voting on a particular position, and I don't see it here.
Because we didn't put it on this meeting.
It'll be in this.
It's being in another meeting.
Yep.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes.
Wait, wait, will you? I couldn't hear what Nick said. What was, what was the question?
Um, he was, uh, wondering if the teachers on special assignment were on, but it, Mark was telling me it will be on a, a, a future meeting.
Okay.
So, he's not ready with that yet, all right. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Board forum. Ms. Paul, you just started us off.
Okay. I wanna say I've completed my first year, I've learned a lot, still a long way to go. I wanna thank everybody for all the help and assistance you've given me over the past year, and congratulations to Brenda and Tim, and welcome, I'm happy to have you here. So, you sit across from me, so.
All right. Mrs. O'Brien?
Um, I'm happy at summer vacation. I'm happy that we have a great group to move forward with. I can't wait to see what you bring and a new perspective, so that's gonna be a great addition, including Mr. Lawrence as well, so, um, I'm looking forward to the work we're gonna do this summer and a successful school year ahead.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Thank you all for a great first meeting. Um, it's, I'm very, very pleased to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. You've had some great insights in the past that I really appreciated, and I look forward to bringing something forward with us. Um, and congratulations to Brenda and Tim.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. DeJalor?
I just wanna welcome Mr. Lawrence, look forward to working with you this year. And to Ms. O'Brien, it's nice to see you here.
Thank you.
Mr. Connors?
Yes, welcome, Ms. O'Brien. Glad to have you here, as I said, you know, I thought way back before I knew you were running that it would be a good fit, so I'm glad to have you here. Mr. Lawrence, thank you for reaching out to me, you know, being proactive on that, you know, I, good, good first impressions from that, you know. And one thing to talk to talk is another to walk the walk, so again, I appreciate that reaching out, not only, but in an accessible way as well. And congratulations to Brenda and the team and everybody, all the hard work you're putting in, especially Desiree, all that work behind the scenes to help me out with everything I need, and I'm sure you're gonna help me be a successful vice president, so thank you again. And that's for you now, Brenda.
Well, I'm looking forward to another year. It's exciting to have new members and the perspective, and I thank you for already jumping on board to help out with our handbook and, and some of those. I know that, uh, in, in passing, we may have let Mrs. Trude know what kind of committees that we were interested in, uh, being on. You probably have the list, because there should, I didn't see the paper here. Do you have it?
I don't have it.
Okay, so I know that we have our, um.
I think it's on the back.
You did, but there were some things that weren't, weren't on there that were not claimed, I should say. Our policy committee, Tim and Lori are still going to stay on that policy committee. Anybody, did you want?
I would like to join it.
I know that you talked about that.
It would be good for me to join it.
And then our health and safety committee, we can only have up to three of us on each committee, so we, we don't have a quorum, so that's why we kinda divvy, divvy it up. Um, health and safety, I'm, I think that, Nick, were you on it last year? Fallon might have been.
Yeah, Fallon.
Yes, Fallon and myself.
And Lori, okay. Um, anybody wants to stay on there or give another opportunity to somebody else?
I'd like to be on.
Okay.
Somebody doesn't want to be on, they think their plate's full.
Okay, so.
And if not, I can wait for another committee to come up where there's need.
All right, Nick, you still wanted to stay on? Or do you?
Is there room for me? It doesn't.
Well, if we can, we can do Lori John, and we can do you?
Sure.
Okay. Cause I know you wanted to be on that last year. That's it, yeah, it's a good committee to, to be on. Um, and now Mr. Capone is our, our head lead for the, yeah, health and safety committee, so, um, all right, we have, what are our other policies? We have. Yeah, well, audit would be Tim and myself, um, and we would be looking for one more. Nick, you were on it last year, is that something you still wanna stay on, or?
I'll give anybody else a chance if they wanna get on it.
Anybody else want to take on audit, or do you wanna just let Mr. DeJalor stay on audit? Okay, looks like we're all to win the numbers, Nick. All right. Well, I know we have our Oswego County School Boards Association. Um, this is a wonderful group that also, uh, works with the Central New York School Board Association, and you would then work with other, um, board members throughout our county schools. Uh, they have a lot of really cool, um, events that they're starting to plan for next year, which is great to help out with our lobbying, you know, as we meet with Mr. Barclay. Uh, there's talk about some, um, possible PD day that they will combine school districts, if there's school districts that are interested in. We also just talked about, um, some training that they're going to put forth for our student board members across the county, and also new board members, uh, as well. Oh, there you go, that's the one I was looking for. They do great work with all of us, it's nice to network with other, um, school districts and to see what kinds of things that they're dealing with. I'll be honest with you, we're all dealing with the same things, but it's nice to get their perspective on how, on how maybe their districts are, are working with things. We can have more than one, I did talk with our president, Tom, last night, and he said that would be a wonderful idea. They would like to bring in some new, some new blood, some new blood, uh, maybe with new fresh ideas, and, um, for those of you who might have, like, a few years left or are just starting out, so, um, I would love to still do the Oswego County School Board Off, um, Association, but I am definitely looking for someone to tail along with me. Um, they're quite often, they're on Monday night, well, all the meetings are on Monday nights, um, quite often, I do have church calls, so sometimes I need to, uh, have a friend fill in, or we could go together, so.
Do they happen once a month? Do they happen?
They, they're not always once a month, sometimes they're a couple months, like, our next meeting won't be until September.
Okay.
Um, and then we, we just talk about when we feel like we need the next meeting, it depends on how many events we have coming up, um, you know, if we're going out to talk to different schools, it's, not all of our school districts are, um, part of this, but we would like all nine school districts to be part of this.
I loved it, I was not a good alternate because my kids and coaching just got in the way, it's at 6 o'clock, but it's usually at the lock.
It's almost always at the lock, sometimes we're in Mexico.[1596.83] Sometimes we're in Mexico.
It's so great and I wish I could have attended more. I can be a third alternate, but I feel like...
So it's Oswego County School Board Association.
I'll do it.
You want to do it too? I mean, you both can, we can have an alternate and then we can... Okay.
Yeah, we'll be alternates.
And sometimes, no, you guys can go along as well because he's, you know, we are start, we're trying to bring more members in so that we... Just before COVID, they were doing a lot of things, but then when COVID happens, obviously we had to come to a standstill and then it's been slow bringing in some of the events. But at the AI meeting that we all went to last year, that was really nice. We brought in Dr. Bill Daggett and we brought another gentleman from downstate up who worked, I think he was a history teacher who was phenomenal with like the whole AI thing. And yeah, Lori, you were there. So just some things, we actually talked last night too, Nick, about the onboarding there. His name was Scott Levy. Do School Boards Matter? And then the student board members, the ex officio stuff. So it's something that kind of talks about that training. So we're hoping to bring that to school boards and administration as well. So, all right, so I'll put Lori and Jess on there as well. Okay, and then, city policy audit, school board, voting delegate. And then we did talk about the strategic coherence plan. This is different than, right? So do you have a member who comes consistently for the strategic coherence plan meetings?
We have the DCC and PCCs. So there really is like a one meeting that's in particular...
Because you do buildings and then you do...
I was on it when we were doing kind of the setup for the stuff, but since it's transitioned into its current form, I haven't been doing that one as much because it's more integrated. A lot of the stuff that they hear there, stuff we're also hearing here.
Okay, all right. Because I knew you were doing it last.
Yeah, but so that was more when the strategic coherence was being updated for our next five years.
Okay.
But I mean, it can't hurt to have someone go to the meeting, but I know a lot of the stuff that's being discussed there is also being discussed here.
We're bringing it on here, okay. So if anybody is interested at any point in time, we know when the meetings are, we can just kind of pop in, as long as there's not four of us, we can kind of pop in for that as well. And that looks like all of our committees at this point. So we are good with that. Also, if you didn't sign and hand in your school board code of ethics, I did sign one, but I forgot to hand it in to you. I know that that needs to be done today as well. I have to sign it. Okay, yep, yep, I can do that.
I almost had that. Sorry about that.
I thank you for everybody who supported me. I look forward to a really good year and I am excited that Tim has set up to step into leadership because he's going to make a really great president someday. So that'll be nice to work with Tim and Mr. Lawrence and, you know, of course, I enjoy always coming and meeting with all of you guys. We have lots of work to do this year. You have lots of work to do this year.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Mr. Palino, for joining us.
Yes.
It's completely not out of character for you. And so thank you for your support. Continued, always.
You look so much more comfortable.
Much more relaxed.
All right. Anyone want to join us for a second public forum? All right, we are going to enter into a brief executive session. And then if I can get somebody to move that. Second. Tim and Jess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, passes 600. Thank you for everybody who's joined us at home this evening. And the rest of us will move on down the hall for a few minutes.
Yep. Nice. Uh, somebody want to move action nine point zero one, adjournment?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, passes seven zero zero. Thank you everyone and have a great evening.
Thank you.